Who's got a motion, Mike?
That's good to be out. Yeah, that's good. I do it back there, but I'm not.
Okay. Um, Dave. Do you think you deserve to start going until John's on camera?
Sure.
Okay, hang on.
Council workshop, May 5th, 2022, 5:30 PM. First item on the agenda is a review of analysis of the EPA response letter.
Okay, Dave, go ahead. Of, of the letter? Yeah, everybody has a copy of the letter. And John's response.
Okay. So, John, you need to go through the EPA part of the plan. And you need to observe a plan. Well, follow some of the approach. That allows to eliminate some of the 85% of our land to the issue. And really also to have a lot of the resources that you need to try to make it through. A lot of the different interpretations about why it's hard or aggressive to make money. So for us, you have to focus on the case. So do you look at that as a chance? Or do you have time to go to the end of the law? And where the other people can go to, to their own, to their own, to their own. So pretty easy. And then you have, um, but the other people who have, that may have, that may have told. But we're able to capture that first to be moving to come from the source of your name. Then we can actually address for testing. That's going to apply to the CSO policy now, so this will apply to the case. Whether that's sort of like, that's what we're doing. That's one required for the first, that's the procedure. And it's also going to require that we have pretty good handles on our producer message. And anybody who has a potential, let's roll in for a specific million to them and ask them to. Racing, and if they're sort of, or if there's some of those comments. So with that, we have a background, and together with this. And we can talk about those, uh, history of the natural after. The part that we're here to bring us, uh, rolling, we put in the plan. And it's a whole consideration. And I think that's, that's what we want to talk about, what we don't agree with, and that's the reason. And since these two are on the hands, that were being the whole, the social, the, the, the reason. And all of this work, we have to show that we all have a, 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 a place. We also have to show that we have the capacity to capture this first flush. To take that back to the supplier. In order to do that, we have to start asking the plants on our own initiatives. To get the fullness of certain back for that first flush and treatment. So we have to turn this very small business activity. And, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, that's, 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 that's. That's basically what we're looking to propose. If they're able to apply, into the world of everything that is. So, so, yeah.
All right, John, you're on.
Okay.
Um, so, so Dave, Dave's my competitor also wanted to kind of, um, did a history review. But if you want to go through your, um, and all of that, it's.
What it is, 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 um, we got a letter from the EPA that said what, what, what we could do. And John has, has crafted a response, um, kind of interpreting and, and summarizing. Uh, because if you read the EPA menu, uh, uh, or memo, there's a lot of stuff in it. Um, and John kind of condensed it down. So if, if John wants to go through that and kind of, um, tell us what, what can be done or could be done, uh, that would be great.
Uh, and getting there, um, so we went for the background. On the top, and, uh, the parts on stack four, yeah. Um, the initial, uh, cities on the century, uh, whatever, to the boundary. It used, uh, some overflows, uh, uh, several years back. A fair amount of progress made on that, uh, at least in one, uh, one of the bases. And some improvements have been made, um, at the wastewater plants. But the remaining components of your proposed long-term control plan. Will, shall we say, a little bit pricier than, uh, uh, than the city would have the resources to do. And to a certain degree, it's, uh, uh, maybe a bit beyond what you have to do. Now, you know, when that, when that proposal was submitted, I, I think everybody was looking at trying to address both CSO and some stormwater issues. That are, uh, and that they basically, uh, just, uh, and then comes out, uh, two, so. But, uh, uh, shall we say, it's something that was, uh, more expensive than the city. And so we were called in to look at that, at this. It, it, it's apparent that there's a number of different ways you can approach CSO, long-term control by a compliance. And what you chose is one way of dealing it. But there ought to be a, uh, uh, a less expensive way of achieving compliance. Now, of course, that's not going to deal with all the remaining stormwater issues. You may have had or encountered over time, but, but it certainly gets, uh, should get your compliance at order. So back in October of last year, we, uh, had recommended that the city send a letter to EPA to get concurrence that yes, in fact, you can amend and update your long-term control plan. Now, this is a letter that I was sure EPA was going to say, well, of course you can do that. But of course, you have to have the data and information and evaluations necessary to do so. Um, well, getting that response took about, oh, six months or so, uh, to get that letter back from EPA. And in March of 2022, uh, EPA sent a letter that, um, acknowledged that yes, in fact, you can amend your long-term control plan. Uh, it's within the control of the city. Uh, of course, there's an approval that goes with that. E, uh, DNR, uh, the state and EPA have to concur that the alternative plan that you would be putting in would comply. Now, if, so if you look at the letter that came from EPA, consider it like two separate documents. One is the cover letter that EPA signed, which expresses what you're allowed to do. And gives you a, uh, an indication of the type, uh, the type of analyses they would expect. That, um, uh, you have to show there's going to be compliance of water quality standards. They want you to show that this alternative approach can reduce approximately, uh, 85% of either the volume or the polluted loadings, um, that would be, uh, currently coming from the CSO areas. And then, of course, once, you know, you've got those evaluations done and submitted, uh, EPA has to approve them. Now, the second document, and this is, th- this is the one that might seem a little confusing to everybody. This second document was not written by EPA, the attachment. It was written by one of the EPA's consultants. So EPA hires consultants to do evaluations for them. And the consultant's letter, um, or the consultant's evaluation was, if you will, a, a listing of, well, here are the type of things you may wish to do in updating your long-term control plan. And then, I mean, there, there were about 20 of the items that they, they discussed. Um, some of them are more important than others, others, quite frankly, you know, mind you, you don't have to do. Uh, you know, in the end, however, you, you do have to do a revised, detailed engineering evaluation to show how much combined sewer you're going to capture. Um, how effective, uh, or what the sizing should be for any holding basis that would be constructed to, for capturing those flows. And of course, that the wastewater plant can handle that, those flows and loads, once it's sent back over there for treatment. Um, I mean, that's the basic part of what you really need. Um, another part of, uh, the analysis that, uh, EPA mentioned several times was showing water quality standards compliance, uh, from the combined system. Uh, and that would be in the Mississippi River. Now, that is not so straightforward. And it's not straightforward for a number of reasons. Uh, whenever you do a water quality evaluation, you're not just looking at what's happening inside the pipe, inside the CSO. You're actually looking at what's happening out in the Mississippi River. Now, the Mississippi River presently does not meet the standards for swimming because of bacteria levels that are upstream. Uh, under that kind of circumstance, you're not really required to do a detailed water quality analysis. What's supposed to happen is the state and EPA are, are to evaluate the Mississippi River and determine what, if anything, can be done to bring it in compliance. And, you know, when you realize that, um, for example, bacteria levels are a function of, uh, uh, the millions of acres of land that's tributary to the river, um, that get, things get washed into it for rainfall. This is no easy thing for anyone to do. So, uh, I'm not suspecting we're going to be going through any kind of very detailed water quality analysis, um, in the Mississippi River. At, at the end of the day, um, uh, the city's going to be asking the state and EPA to complete the more detailed analysis of the entirety, to determine what, if anything else, you're talking about. So, uh, while EPA raised that as a point, I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about that for now. Um, but the real issue is, in fact, getting together a detailed sampling and engineering plan so that you can determine how much combined sewer flow we presently have out of the remaining large area, uh, what the loadings are, the river, and the soil overflows. Because it doesn't always overflow. I mean, some of it, uh, kicks back to the wastewater plant. And, uh, it only is a certain high rainfall event that, that more will go out. Um, so you do that determination and then we, your engineers determine how big the holding bases is and where they need to be located. And then how those flows get sent back to the wastewater plant. Once you have that, then you have the capability of asking for amendments of the long-term control plan. Um, and I just want to say one other thing about the, uh, uh, the technical evaluation and the engineering evaluation that needs to be done. Now, obviously, there's going to be a significant data collection effort because you don't have the information you need to know all of what's going on with that area in our system. Um, but normally, we recommend that cities prepare a, 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 a work plan, a study plan for the, uh, for the sampling and the evaluation. And you submit that to the state to get their feedback on whether or not they believe that it'd be sufficient, uh, to generate the kind of information and data, um, that you need in order to make the changes you want to make. That's also the same document, uh, wherein we would, for example, discuss whether or not you need to do a number of the multiple additional points that were recommended in EPA's consulting report. So we kind of deal with that in one fell swoop, eh, with that document. And, you know, when, when DNR reviews and they concurs with the, uh, scope of work and the study analysis, then the city will be in a position to go out and get the data. But I would not do any data collection of anything else until you get concurrence that what you're, the type of information you're collecting appears to be sufficient to the state in order to make the updated valuation. The last thing you want to do is go spend a bunch of money on sampling analyses and then have somebody say, oops, you should have done five other things, which now cost an additional however much money, and then set back the, um, uh, the reconsideration of this issue for a good number of years. And, and this sampling plan's going to run a good three years. Because you've got to, um, you've got to get enough different types of rainfall events so you can characterize what the system response is that's affecting the CSO, what the runoff is like. And, you know, that can't happen with a single year's worth of data. So, uh, this is a multi-year event and you want to know upfront whether it's a type of analyses and information that you're collecting should be likely be sufficient to give the answers to the questions that have to be answered. Um, so that's it in the big picture. Uh, in short, they have opened the door to you. You just need to take steps that, to complete that, or else you're stuck with your prior long-term control plan, which is, it's just not, you know, financially viable.
So, John, I'm going to kind of sum up what, what you said there is that, um, we have to come up with a study plan, submit it, get it approved, complete the study, analyze the results. Based upon the results, come up with a plan and a design that we submit back for, uh, approval, and then we can move on, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, great summary.
Okay. So, so what it comes down to in a nutshell is, is that EPA says that, yes, we can modify it. But in order to modify it, as John stated, we have to do, um, some studies. The study is going to, well, first of all, we have to come up with a plan that gets approved. So there's going to be some money to, to develop the plan. There's going to be some money to do the study. And as John said, multi-year, um, uh, study. It's not going to be something that can be done in a year. It's going to be two, three, uh, years at, at, at least. Uh, and then, once we get that, we can then look to see where we can start putting some, um, retention or detention and, um, uh, capture some of that water so we're not, so we're, we're reducing that first flush and are able to, um, treat the water better. And then from there, we can then, um, uh, start building, get, get that plan approved and then start working on, on, um, building those retention areas. What it means is, is that perhaps through this entire process, we spend $20 million or less. And I'm just taking that out of the air versus $120 million under the current plan. Well, eh, eh, right. We would risk them not approving our, our plan. But I'm assuming that what it is, is through our data, we're going to be able to show how to, how to, um, how to, yeah, mediate the, the, the first flush and be able to treat more of the water. The, the, the $20 million is not going to be the study. The $20 million is going to be the whole package, the, 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 and again, it's just a number I pull out of my office. Well, let's, let's put it this way. It's, it's wishful thinking with a high probability of the wish coming true.
Are there, and I'm sure there's, pardon the pun, same, in the same boat. There's got to be a lot of river city towns that are in the same boat as we are.
Correct.
Is there any, um, way to gain knowledge from other cities that have done a study similar to this? Where we could, um, save ourselves a lot of time and money looking into someone else's?
No, because each city is unique. Each city's, each city's circumstances and system is unique. Um, what I can tell you is, is that, is that our, um, our system is going to be different than Fort Madison. So Fort Madison has a different solution to their problem that we have.
Okay. I have a question, and this might be for John. I don't know if he can hear me. Can you hear me, John?
No, probably not, just.
Uh, it did probably, it comes to as a bit of an echo.
Okay.
Yeah, so go ahead and I'll, I'll relay it.
Okay. I'm, when, Cole, when you went through, like, you know, we'd do a plan, come up with a plan, then we would do a study of collection of data over years, and then we would turn that into the EPA. I'm assuming when you listed off, I wrote down five bullet points. When you listed off those five bullet points of here, within those bullet points, somewhere along the lines, the EPA could step in and said, hey, just based off what we see from your study, which is not going to cost us $20 million.
Correct.
But based off what we see in the study, this is not going to work. You know, or this is where, or you, or we would have information from EPA before we get $20 million in to it, is what I.
Well, okay, so, so let's understand something, that I assume that the study is going to be several hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That the total solution might be $20 million.
Right, right, right.
Might be $10 million, might be $9 million, might be $5 million. I can't tell you that.
Right.
Okay? Because it's going to be based upon the information that we gather over those years. And no, EPA won't step in because we will not give them results until the study is complete.
And that would be at the very end, even with the building of retention and stuff like that?
No, no, no.
Until the study is complete.
Once, once we have the study.
Right.
Right? We can then present to them a, um, uh, an idea or a plan of, of, hey, if we put this here, and this here, and this here, we can meet the standard.
Right.
Then they approve the plan. And then at that fat point, we're, we're, we've got the go-ahead to go ahead and complete the plan.
Right. So that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm asking here, is just that throughout this, we are getting information, information and clarification from the EPA as we kind of go through these steps, um, before we have to get through all of them at the very end. So that should help in the sense of, like, it's not so much wishful thinking because we are going to be getting clear, clarity from the EPA as we go through.
Well, eh, understand the process. And I'm going to go through the process again because it's, we come up with a, a, a testing plan, submit it for approval.
Yes.
Once that testing plan is approved, right? Then we do the testing. Once the testing is done, we then go and say, hey, we think that we can fix our problem by doing this, this, and this.
Right.
Then we submit it to the EPA and the EPA says, yes, it's good, or no, it's not.
Right.
Right.
Or they might say, we like it, but we still need you to do this and this. If you add that to it, now we'll approve it. So it's not like we're just willy-nilly and it, throwing it out there.
Right.
This is actually building blocks toward. This is actually building blocks towards it and I think if we do our diligence on doing it correctly, I think they will work with us because they want everybody in compliance.
Right.
My concern was at the end of the testing, they say, you still need X, Y, Z, and we've just wasted five years of inflation and it doesn't cost 120 million anymore, it costs 170 million.
Well, what I can tell you is, is that, is that we believe that right now, we meet the standard, but we haven't done the testing to prove that. We might through our testing, find out that we meet that 85% standard.
What if we don't?
Well, if we don't, well, then what it is, is then we, then we, through our study of where the water is coming from and when it's coming and how it's coming, we can look at where to put detention and retention, which costs a whole lot less than a $42 million tunnel under the park.
I'm aware, does the, I know that 20 million was just a ballpark, I'm not holding you to that. Is that before you start implementing the things that's, or including implementing?
No, 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 that's, that 20 million is complete and it's like I said, it's the top, top of my head. That's, that's with everything, everything that gets us to satisfying the consent order.
Okay.
Okay. Versus like I said, we might spend $10 million total, we might spend $8 million total, I can't tell you. But what I'm telling you is it's a whole lot less than 120 million dollars, which I think is what, close to what the current estimate might be if we were to do the current CSO plan.
I know each town is unique. I think though it might be worthwhile reaching out to see what they have done. I know each town is unique, but it might be useful to have that as a reference.
Without the data, we won't know what we need to do.
I meant to start the plan.
Right, without the data.
You know what I'm saying, like, yes.
So three years later, talk to other towns, yeah. A question on the timeline, the EPA has given us a one-year pause right now.
Right.
So if we're saying we need three years of testing, is that going to be any holdup with EPA?
Um, we, and I believe that Mr. Hall is going to prepare a letter that we're going to send to EPA that says, hey, this is what we'd like to do and that it's going to take us a few years and EPA hopefully will say, okay, this is all part of your plan, you know, and be able to go ahead.
Yeah, but hold on, that city certainly is going to need at least an additional piece of correspondence back to EPA on extending whatever schedule you have such that everybody understands what you'll be undertaking. And, you know, we've already, by the first letter that's gone in, EPA already understands what you want to do. Now it's simply a question of, you know, if you will take the bull by the horns and get it moving. So if you don't do that, you're stuck with your own plan and they will enforce it. If you take the alternative that, you know, is now out on the table, then you've got some time to evaluate and hopefully save a lot of money on the, on the overall solutions you've got.
So are there any more questions? Because once, once John prepares the memo, we'll be working with, with V and K engineering who's been working on this with us to develop the study plan to be submitted to EPA for approval.
All the samples that we've been doing over the last few years or one year on back some, are we going to be able to use any of that for part of this or we need to start from scratch as far as our data? I mean, I know it may change, but.
So, so the question is, is that any of the, any of the sampling and testing that we've been doing over the last year or so, will that be able to be incorporated or would all have to start from scratch?
I don't know the full extent of the sampling that's been done, but any existing sampling you have on your system is part of the database that you end up using to evaluate, what changes you need to make. Now, the data that you really are lacking right now, I mean, you know, it's volume and frequency of flow data of what's coming out of CSO. And that hasn't been collected yet, at least not, not in a manner in which the engineers, for example, can reliably use it to determine what size holding bases you need. So, you know, consider this to be a significantly enhanced sampling program.
Any other questions?
Do we have any estimates at all on what the engineering firm is going to, what this is going, the cost incurred in this as they get started?
Not yet and that, and that will be part of discussions that we'll have. So there'll need to be a contract beforehand that will spell out the, the costs and everything else. So once we have that, then we'll, we'll get that to council.
Do we have money in our CSO account now to, to get this started?
We have sufficient funds in sewer to get this started, yes. Any additional questions?
I'll just say, we, we need to pursue this because we all know we can't afford the roughly 120 million today and even if inflation makes it 150, 160, three years later and we're faced with that, we can't afford that either. So, I mean, this gives us a shot to actually complete something where the current plan does not.
I agree. I just hope along the way, like Councilmember Marsden said, even if we aren't reaching out until the end of the plan, is there a way along the way to say, hey, look at, these are our results, do we need to continue? Instead of waiting until we've spent more money when we potentially may not have to.
So, so I think, I think the question is going to be to EPA is, is how much is sufficient data and can we give to you ahead of time? And if, and it's going to be up to EPA to be able to say, say, you know, they might say, you're going to need two years' worth of data or there might be a standard right now that says you need a certain amount of data in order to, to do this. So we'll, we'll take a look at that and that'll be part of the plan that we be presented to council for approval to be submitted to EPA. Any further questions? Okay, well, I'd like to thank John and Dave and Ed for being on. You're welcome to stick around, otherwise I'm going to go ahead and end the meeting. I know that John is up on vacation and, and I hope he's not charging us extra because he's up there.
No, no, I'm just waiting to eat some beef stew, that's all.
All right, well, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and let you go then. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody have a nice evening.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number two, which is review council minute agenda.
Is, is there any item the council would like additional discussion on at this time?
It looks like there weren't police officers asked for, for, I believe the block party, sorry, I don't, I don't think it's the actual block party, and then a beer tasting at the Sid Center. Are they not required for those?
Uh, I believe the, let me see the, which one, which ones are you pointing out there?
I think the Dr. Getwell's one, the police was, there was something written there and then they crossed it out.
That's why I'm wondering.
Right, okay, so the, so as far as the special event for the tasting, that is one where because they're not, they're not selling it.
Even though it's being provided.
And it's contained and it's contained within an area. I mean, if, if you want, we can have a police officer there, but.
Oh, I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Yeah.
That nobody feels like they're getting the short end of the stick.
Right. Well, and, and the, and the special event permit for Getwells, of course, that's going to be out on the street and.
Yeah, it just doesn't have a number, so that's why I was wondering.
Oh, oh, he doesn't have a number. He called the day and it's two.
Okay.
Yeah, he called it and, and the chief reminded me, as soon as he sent it in, Chief Hinton emailed me and said, hey, he doesn't have this information. I sent it out that day and.
Okay, I just saw that it was crossed out, there was no number.
Yeah, yeah.
So if it's in a building, even though you're providing it to the public, you don't need one?
It's a special circumstance with the Sid Center because it is within a building and the only reason why they need a special event permit is because it's a city property.
I guess, what's the difference if we were doing it in like the shelter house and you weren't allowed to leave the shelter house and it was free?
Well, the shelter house is in a park and, and when the.
So city property.
Right, I understand that, but what it is, the shelter i- is that we currently have a, a, a regulation against alcohol within the parks.
Okay, so.
And so what it is, is, is when they hold it in the park, the reason why they need that, that police officer is because of that regulation and we had, I know we had a discussion.
Oh, I remember, so we could do that here without a police officer. All right, the shelter house was probably a bad example. Here, the street department building, you could do all of that in those buildings without a police officer.
I would say yes, if it's in those buildings and contained. And it also depends upon the event. I mean, if we're running a, a beer garden within a building, right, which we probably would never do, right? But if we were doing that, then I, you know, there would be a, a police officer. But on the social events, I, again, I mean, if, if the council wants a police officer, I just thought that because it's contained, it's a social event.
I just want to make sure we are following, same for everyone.
Yeah, I have a question on item 17, the resolution authorizing the purchase of the street sweeper. What, refresh my memory on what the cost of that is.
Uh, I think the total cost.
It's not on there, so.
Yeah, the, it's, it's not on the agenda, but it is in the, the, it's in the pack action sheet, action sheet, and how much was that, Robert? The, the net, because we're getting a $40,000 trade-in and so the net is.
The portion the city has to pay is $217,066.
On a budget of $225,000.
Full price was $25766. They're allowing us $40,000 trade-in for our 2012 sweeper that we currently have and that takes that $201766.
And we budgeted $225.
Just to give you a little insight on that too, we had a price for, in December and from December to now, it went up.
What I will tell you on, on the newer sweepers is that they, and I know this because a good friend of mine works for the City of Ames and that's what he does, is run the street sweeper, that there's a lot less moving parts so that there is, they tend to last a little longer, the newer ones, because of, of the cut down of the number of moving parts. So hopefully what it is, is this one, instead of lasting 10 years, will go 15, 16, 17 years.
Okay, I think we can take a break and come back at 6:30.
Um, I have a bumper to fix.
That's going to cost $5,000 bucks.
Well, on the police report, it says $100. Well, his trailer hitch took out the bumper and so it broke through.
So what kind of?
A beetle, a flagon beetle.
Because I know that when I.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
That's on, that's on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.[1449.92]
Destroyed my front bumper.
Oh, okay.
That's on, that's on the chat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
[inaudible]
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 Yep, there, there's one.
I thought the two of them.
Oh, geez.
My house.
Where'd you get that?
That's for us.
And why don't you, I, I'm, 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 I'm mad.
My, my, actually, I, I don't see, I don't know which they might.
Yes.
That's awesome.
You're right.
This is all inside.
Just go.
Oh, geez.
He's so awesome.
I don't know what they are.
Shit.
Yes.
That's, that's.
[inaudible]
Okay.
I know you're bringing up the share.
I already ate most of that.
Oh, that's the best part about being in the end, right?
Yep. It's too late to eat when we got home.
I know. I get it, I get it.
I don't, I can't do that, because I just leave work and come here. Yeah.
But I have to make sure my daughter has something before I can leave. I have somebody coming to sit with me. She's-
Mm-hmm.
[inaudible]
But how long have they been since they've been?
A while.
Me either. City Council meeting, May fifth, two thousand twenty-two, five oh one Main Street, six thirty P. M. Call to order, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Renshaw?
Here.
Altide?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Nguyen?
Here.
Helen Thal?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Marsden?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Greenwald?
Here.
All present. Item number four is mayor's correspondence. Um, Friday, May fifth, which is tomorrow, Main Street Incorporated is, um, kicking off a new event called First Friday. There are some businesses that will remain open until eight o'clock and other businesses that will be participating. This month's event is in honor of Mother's Day, and it is called Ladies' Night Out. There will be food and drink specials at Chins's Bar and Grill and Get Wells. Others participating are Zen, Soul Society Yoga, Younger, Younger and Shoes, Lou and Joe Clothing, Kate Hill Pribble Jewelry, Hair Designers, Kurt Toys Creations, The Watering Can, Blue Umbrella, and The Lost Canvas. Um, also on, tomorrow on Friday, the Lions Club will be doing their White Kane Days at Hy-Vee and Walmart on Friday. Um, also tomorrow, which is Friday, Great River Players are presenting a, a play entitled Meteor Showers on Friday night at seven thirty and on Saturday at two P. M. Saturday morning at eight A. M., the Kia Cut Garden Club will be having its annual plant sale at Estes Park at the corner here of Fifth and Main. At ten A. M., there will be, at ten A. M., there will be a garden day for the veterans at the Hamilton Community Center. The public library will have an event, Library Garden, teaching and learning about how to do your gardening. At nine A. M., the Great River Players will be hosting a breakfast of desperation at the Fourth Worth Barbecue, and that fall will be followed by Penn City Cruiser's Car Show in Fort Madison. Last but not least, on Saturday, Daly and Vincent will be performing at the, um, Grand Theater at seven thirty. Tickets are available at Kia Cut Tourism or at the door. Um, congratulations to Connection Bank, who will be celebrating their one-year anniversary in their new location at twenty-one nineteen Main Street, and that will be on May nineteenth. Thanks to the Kia Cut Park Foundation on the opening of the dog park. There's a lot more to come, and, um, the signs aren't up with the rules, so we have some just, uh, generic signs up, but, um, it is open and it is accessible. And last but not least, please remember to eat, drink, shop, read, and listen local. I see great things for Kia Cut. Item number five, citizens' request. If you have anything that you need to say right now, or you would like to come up and ask questions, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and then tell us what you need.
Hi there, my name's James Johnson, and, uh, what I'm here about is there was a letter out on Facebook that was signed J. Johnson. I do work for the city of Killkuck, and a lot of people said I wrote the letter. I just want to clarify and get it on record, I did not write the letter. If I've got a problem with somebody, I will definitely talk to them face-to-face. I won't put it on Facebook. And if anybody wants to contact me, whoever this Kevin Helmick is that shared all this, my phone number's three one nine seven nine five six nine zero nine. And anybody can call me at any time if they got a problem with me. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I'm David Whitebread. First of all, this is a beautiful chamber. Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Uh, you go away for a year and you come back and- You go away for a year and you come back and look at this city anyways. But I did write the letter, my first letter ever to any editor of any newspaper on this, on 19 April. And it concerns the replica oil rig that sits in Section 41 of our beautiful cemetery. I left town in April of 2021. It wasn't there. I get back in March, six weeks ago, and it's there. So I'm only looking, and I don't know all the details. I probably only know what was in an article when I got back in our delegate city. And from reviewing the minutes for the last few months of the council minutes. So I know very little, other than I've gathered it was erected without full, proper authorization. And so I'm asking tonight, has that authorization been finalized? That it's going to be there for the future? It makes a difference to me.
So to remind the council, staff did bring this forward at a meeting and there was a discussion. No formal action was taken. Those staff requested if the council wanted us to draw up any formal action. And the consensus at that time was not to move forward with anything.
Did we talk by chance? Did you, did you call your ward representative?
Did I call?
First ward. Okay.
First.
That would be me. And I emailed, I actually emailed you back today. Did you read the update yet?
No, I did not.
So I did get the emails that you sent and then the one forwarded from Kathy and then that's the one I replied from. Sorry, and I didn't mean that to call anybody out. I just, I've also received a lot of calls and I'm trying to remember like everybody. So I just wanted to make sure if I had spoken to you on the phone, which is some of the people that I've, that I've talked to and a couple of emails, I wanted to make sure that I was recollecting that correctly. So not to call anybody. Oh, no, it's fine. So, sorry.
Okay, I'm not sure. Has it been finalized that the structure is approved?
Short of any additional action by the council, yes.
It has been approved.
Short of any additional action by the council, yes.
It has not been voted.
Right, we, the staff approved it, brought it to the council, asked if they wanted to take any formal action and they declined to do so.
Okay, well, that's disappointing. I don't know if any of you have any loved ones in Section 41. So possibly in the future, I will come forward and ask, how do I go about getting authorization to put something that is significant at my parents' grave? And maybe I would erect a 20-foot-tall chapel representation as my father was a minister. And, and if you don't approve that, I, I think you're opening up a Pandora's Box. That is, someone built something. Now, I'm, I'm, I don't have all the information, other than what I just heard and read in the paper, but you've, you've let something that wasn't authorized go ahead. But I might put in an authorization or a request or whatever the terminology is to put something like that. Maybe I can position it where it can block the oil rig. There's nothing else out there in the cemetery that looks out of place to me.
Just for your information, what it is, is, is there was conflicting information as to if permission was given or not given by the previous public works director. So based upon that, that's the reason why staff said it can stay. But we are trying to amend our procedures so that in the future, there'll be a paper trail, because there was no paper trail on this, and that anything outside of the norm would have to come to the council for approval.
And I might be submitting that for a 20-foot-tall, because that's about the height of the oil rig representation out there. Thank you for your time. It's beautiful. And I know you make big decisions that affect the community. And sometimes it comes down to, I guess, making a decision which only affects an individual or a small group of people. And that's pretty important when you're on the receiving end of a decision. On a little lighter note, why I was gone for a year? I was working at Grand Canyon National Park. Anybody heard of that? Yes, well, I hope so. And so I told my supervisors out there, who are normally half my age, but that's the way I want it. They wanted me to be a supervisor. I said, no, I don't want to be a supervisor. I just want to be a ranger. And so over here, I have three sets of brochures that you're welcome to take. As Teddy Roosevelt said in 1908, before he made Grand Canyon a national monument and it became a national park in 1919. You don't have to record all this in the minutes, that's for sure. But he said, every American should experience the Grand Canyon once during their lifetime. So they're over there and I'll leave them there. And if they're still there tomorrow, I'll come back and pick them up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number six is the consent agenda. Minutes of the special council meeting of April 14th, 2022. Minutes of the Safety Committee meeting of April 21st, 2022. Minutes of the council workshop and regular city council meeting of April 21st, 2022. Resolution approving a liquor license for Chinses, 1310 Main Street, effective May 20th, 2022, Class C liquor license. Resolution approving a liquor license for Get Well's Bar and Grill, Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales, May 20th through May 24th, 2022, for special event block party outside establishment. Resolution approving a liquor license for Walgreens, number 05886, 1215 Main Street, effective May 22nd, 2022, Class E liquor license with Class C beer permit, Class B wine permit, and Sunday sales. Resolution approving a liquor license for Santana's Mexican Restaurant, 3753 Main Street, effective June 8th, 2022, Class C liquor license with Sunday sales. Special events permit for Keokuk Area Chamber of Commerce Brewery Recruitment and Tasting, May 14th, 2022, 3:00 to 5:00 PM, at the Southeast Iowa Development Center, 1417 Exchange. Special permit, events permit for Dr. Get Well's setup, May 21st, 2022, 9:00 AM, and tear-down on May 22nd, 2022, at 2:00 PM. Live music, 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM, 1100 Main Street Block Party in the Streets. Special event permit for J&amp;M Displays, 4th of July Celebration to be held at Ram Park and River Road, July 4th, 8:00 AM setup until midnight cleanup. Motion to pay the bills and transfer, transfers listed in the register's number 5269 to 5270. Motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I may have an issue or there may be issues with that 1:00 AM live music for Get Well's. That's, I know that's a late time for a lot of people. That border Main Street that we've had issues with L-Train's before with music going on that long. And I, I feel like 1:00 AM might be a late time for live music for some of the residents.
Dave, do you know, in the past, have we, has that been the, the, the time that we've allowed or has it been shorter?
I'd have to go back and look at last year's application. I think it was that, I think the same timeframe was permitted. We do take some complaints, like Councilperson Nguyen was saying. Usually starting about the midnight range is when we start taking some complaints, especially anywhere on Main Street. For some reason, the acoustics tend to bounce a long distance away. So you'll get some complaints from parts across the city that you wouldn't expect that would be hearing it, but they do. Most of the time, those people are okay with council's approval of the event, but not always. So I can go back and do some checking on that for you to see what the permit said last year and then to see how many complaints we had during that evening, if that would help you out. I know it's last minute now.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, I know that we've had issues with that late of music before with other establishments. So I'm just considering the residents that do complain about.
Correct. I think this event's coming up pretty quick and I don't think we would have, the council would have time to approve it again. Is that correct? Isn't it like May 20?
Yeah, the, the, this is occurring on the 21st.
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 We have the date on the 19th.
I would like to add that city code does state that they can be played until 1:00.
Right, so what I think, what I think it is, is this is within our code, but that if the council would like to change that to midnight for live music outdoors, we can consider that and send that to code review.
I would not be interested in looking at that again.
I do think too, it, it says live music, but I don't think it's a band. I think it's Will Whitmore and he's an individual, right?
Correct.
So I, it's not going to be like there's a huge band and they're going crazy down there. It's just, it's Will Whitmore. He's a great draw and a great person, but it's just one person.
I agree. I don't particularly want to go back and look at the code. I'm okay with 1:00 AM.
And I can get that information if you just want to look at it.
No, I just, I just wanted to bring that up because I know that we've, we have had issues with that in the past. And so I'm okay with it too, but it's not, I'm not in an area where I, where it's gonna, where I'm gonna hear it, so.
Any, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number seven, motion to remove from the table a resolution designating the standard as life insurance carrier for the city of Keokuk. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, item number, no, we gotta go ahead. Now we need a motion to approve, since we removed it from the table. Here we go. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
At the last meeting, council asked staff to determine if additional quotes could be detained for life and health insurance plans. The health plan is through a pool regulated by a 28E. In order to exit the pool, notice must be given by April 1st of the year of intent to withdraw. That deadline has been missed for the fiscal year 2223 health insurance. Life insurance is outside of the pool and we could seek additional quotes. However, premiums from the standards provide significant savings and staff would not recommend seeking additional quotes at this time. I do know that if not last year, the year before, that we did go out for additional quotes on life insurance and there wasn't a lot of difference locally. This time, when the, our third-party administrator went out for a quote, there was significant difference. Staff will, in December and November, December, will seek quotes for health insurance outside of the pool in order to determine if there's any savings outside of the pool.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eight, motion to approve the initial reading of an ordinance amending 2.04.030 of the Keokuk Municipal Code Meetings Time Order of Business. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
The ordinance provides the city council sets the reg, sets the time of the regular meetings at the first meeting in January every year by resolution. This allows the council to move the start time to 5:30 PM with work sessions to follow. Setting the time by resolution, the council has the flexibility to move the start time should 5:30 not work or set times for certain meetings at a different time, i.e. such as meetings after holidays or, excuse me, other special circumstances.
Any discussion?
So the time that this would, if this was to be enacted, we would have to do it, it wouldn't start until January.
No, 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 we can, because we're changing the ordinance now, there is a resolution on tonight's agenda. It's just that when January comes, the first meeting, we'll have, pass a new resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
You did already.
We need a roll call.
Aye. Yep, aye.
Altide? Garcia? Nguyen?
Aye.
Helenthal? Andrews?
Aye.
Marsden?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to waive the second, third reading of this ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion? I need a roll call.
Renshaw?
Aye.
Altide?
Aye.
Garcia? Nguyen?
Aye.
Helenthal? Andrews?
Aye.
Marsden?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
We have a motion to adopt and give final approval for the ordinance. Item number nine.
Need to make that motion. Somebody needs to make the motion for.
Have a motion?
Final approval and adoption.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I might mention, Madam Mayor, that the reason for this is, well, because sometimes we run out of time at a workshop. Sometimes we don't have enough to discuss at a workshop, so we end up taking 20 minutes to a half-hour break, kind of like we did tonight. But other times, there's workshop issues that go long. This way, if we have the council meeting first and the workshop later, we have, we don't cut people off. We have more time to discuss. So I just wanted the public to know why we're making this change.
Okay, item number nine, motion to approve the initial reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the municipal code dealing with health and sanitation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Sections 5.28.030 and 5.28.060 in the municipal code basically state that the city would have bags available for sale and for yard waste bags for people to pick up at City Hall and use. The city has not had or sold yard waste bags for several years. The compost and waste bags are available for purchase at various local stores and the proposed amendment would remove the language that we have the bags from the ordinance.
Any more discussion? I need a roll call.
Renshaw?
Aye.
Altide?
Aye.
Garcia? Nguyen?
Aye.
Helenthal?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Marsden?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Any motion to waive the second and third reading of this ordinance?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, we need a roll call, sorry.
Renshaw?
Aye.
Al Tied? Garcia? Nguyen?
Aye.
Helen Thaw?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Marston?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to adopt and give final approval to the ordinance.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item number 10, motion to approve the initial reading of an ordinance amending Section 9.28.040 dealing, dealing with the parking regulations. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Keokuk Community School District requested the corner of 20th and Fulton Streets be made no parking. This has helped during drop-off and pickup times. No parking would be restricted from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and I do have a map here. So it's that rounding corner there. As discussed at the previous meeting, uh, that, um, residents in that area were contacted, and, um, they did not have a problem with the, um, no parking.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Renshaw?
Aye.
Al Tied?
Aye.
Garcia? Nguyen? Helen Thaw?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Marston?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to waive the second and third reading of this ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, being, it is in Fifth Ward, and it is affecting citizens. Um, and I know we did do our due diligence, and Robert did go and talk to people. I know other council people, um, went and spoke to other people and had phone calls. At the last discussion, we didn't know who had had that car that was normally parked there, and I do know it's 7:00 to 4:00. Um, I drove by it. I do work near there, just a block over. Um, and I'm seeing they're parking very consistently on the other side of the street now, um, since, you know, I think there was some talk just from Public Works Director to them. I still would like to not waive that second and third, just to have public input, um, just in case we didn't get everyone.
I suppose it's the end of the school year, just about, so we don't really need to be in a rush with this particular one.
So, right now, you have a motion on the floor, so either the person making the motion and the person second need to agree to either withdraw the motion, or you need to take a vote and vote nay on waiving the second and third.
Did I make that or second that? I made it, made the motion. I will withdraw that motion.
Who was the second?
I would, um, I don't know.
Roger? Do you agree to withdraw?
Have we had any, uh, anybody request or talk about it? Anybody called up and said anything?
If City Hall hasn't, I have not to, which I'm the ward representative of that area. I have not gotten a phone call, but since it was at the last meeting, I'm just not always confident, even though I think we do a good job of trying to get the information out there. I do think sometimes it can, you know, miss, and then you have it coming back up and back up. And with what Councilman Greenwald said, I'd like to give them the opportunity to contact me if they had an issue.
My only issue with it is it's not in front of a house. If we was eliminating parking in front of someone's home, I would definitely agree with you. It doesn't make any difference to me either way where there's no house right in front of there. I'm not opposed to waiving it, so it, it doesn't matter to me. It's whatever the body of the council decides.
So the question is still back to Roger. Do you agree with, to withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw it. I, I just think we're belaboring that, that I, I will withdraw my second.
So the motion is withdrawn.
Okay, can we move on to the next, right? Okay, number 11, consider resolution setting start time of the regular city council meetings for 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Heard of the ordinance that just passed. The resolution says the regular meeting start time at 5:30 PM.
When will this go into effect?
Uh, we have the 10 days and the publication, so it would go into effect for the first meeting, or the second meeting of this month.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 12, consider resolution setting dates of a cons, consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment, number seven, to amended and restated Twin Rivers Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Keokuk, state of Iowa. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
The downtown urban renewal area was decertified in 2021 as it was set to expire. The original URA was set up under economic development and therefore had a 20-year lifespan. Proceeds are necessary to add the original downtown area into the Twin Rivers URA as a slum and blighted area. Uh, this will allow the area to have no sunset clause, uh, as with the rest of the, um, urban renewal area. The resolution does the following, sets May 13, 2022, at 10, 10 o'clock, 10:00 AM for a consultation meeting with other tax and jurisdictions, and sets June 2, 2022, at 5:30 PM for the public hearing.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 13, consider resolution directing the acceptance of the proposal to purchase $1,840,000 amount, subject to change, general obligation capital loan net notes, Series 2022, and approving the form and authorizing execution of a note purchase agreement. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This authorizes the purchase of the bonds for the water pollution control plant press project with fees. The final, uh, the final bond amount actually comes in at $1,857,910.15. The average interest rate is 3.56767%, and the total interest cost is $779,594.
Any more discussion?
I have a question, or can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. How long would these be held for? Like, um, how long is the time period to pay them off?
I believe these are a 15-year bond.
Okay, does the interest wait, is the interest rate gonna be set, or is it gonna fluctuate?
It, that, that's why there's an average interest rate.
Okay.
It, um, will, it stays set for a certain number of years, and then it changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 14, consider resolution approving letter of engagement with Allers & Cooney PC. Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
As we move forward, forward with possible incentives for the Baymont Hotel renovations, legal counsel with expertise in the area of urban renewal, TIF, and developers' agreements is required to ensure that all proposed documents and proposals are complete and conform to Iowa code. Allers & Cooney PC has handled all of our urban renewal actions and previous development agreements, and are considered experts in the field.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Item number 15, consider resolution approving Lee County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan for the city of Keokuk, Lee County, Iowa, under the provisions of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, as amended by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
The federal government requires local jurisdictions to adopt a pre-disaster mitigation plan. The plan identifies areas that could incur damage and disruptions as a result of natural or man-made disasters. Mitigation of the possible, um, problems are proposed as part of the plan. The plan must be adopted in order to receive FEMA assistance in the event of a disaster. Lee County Emergency Management has developed a plan to cover the entire county with individual jurisdictions adopting the entire plan to cover their community. And I hope you all clicked on the link and read all 240 pages.
Do we have a, a current plan right now?
Say that again.
Do we have a current plan right now?
We have a current plan? Um, yes, and what I will tell you is, is that it used to be that they, that FEMA wanted a regular update. Um, now the, the last time that I had to do this as part of the city, um, you had a, you had a, a disaster mitigation plan, and then you had a pre-disaster mitigation plan, and then quite literally, you had a pre, pre-disaster mitigation plan, and they kept changing it, changing it. I am unsure if this is just an update, or if this is another one of their, hey, you have to do a new plan and there's some new regulations. All I know is that Lee County Emergency Management developed a plan, we adopt it, and we can get FEMA funds in the event of a disaster.
Okay, so then when you would find out that answer, you would just tell us, like, if it's a new one, or if we're just updating something?
Right, well, what I'm assuming is, is, is that this is, is, you know, that, that we had a pre-disaster mitigation plan, so it, it was more than likely they took much of the same information and just updated it.
Okay, and we update these how often?
Um, uh, I haven't done this in a while, so I'm assuming that it's once every five to 10 years.
Okay.
Or whenever FEMA says that we have to do it again.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 16, consider resolution authorizing advertisement for request for proposals for re-codeification and updates to Title 20 zoning of the Keokuk Municipal Code. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead, Pam.
So this update has been a goal of mine for many years, and the city councils. So I'm finally getting around to, um, trying to, um, request for proposals to do this. Um, there will be some tweaks to this document. I apologize for getting it out to you late. I did, I did just notice I had Platts and subdivisions in here. Um, I would like to do that, but I don't know if my budget is going to allow, um, both the zoning, the codification, re-codification, and the Platts and subdivision. I will continue to, we will have a lot of, um, quite a few meetings on the zoning part, part of it. I will try to, um, be involved in those as much as I can to keep the cost down, um, instead of letting the, um, contractor, or however the consultants do that. Um, Cole will help with the re-codification. I'm excited about it, and I'm going to be back next year for more money.
So, um, so, uh, part of an explanation is, is that both the municipal and zoning codes are in need of updates. Um, the zoning code update will standardize language, fix conflicts between sections, and increase the ease of use. Re-codification of the entire code would, will remove obsolete sections, cross-check for conformity to state and federal codes, and provide an opportunity to add ordinances. Um, this, the, the resolution authorizes sending out RFPs for service, and once we receive RFPs, um, staff will come back and have the, um, a, a resolution for approval, but I would also ask that the, um, uh, firm, um, be present during that time and kind of give you proposals of, of their work order. Uh, and there are funds budgeted in, for both the zoning and municipal code review.
We talked about this during Finance Committee, um, but I just wanted to bring up that this also gives us the opportunity to update codes and change them as we're going through, right, the entire council.
Correct. So if there's something during this process that you're interested in making sure that's in there, um, or out of there, um, you, you know, there'll be an opportunity for that.
Great. So during the public hearings, um, the zoning actually will, is required to go through the City Planning Commission, so, um, I will make sure the council is aware of those meetings, and, um, you know, if you are interested in, um, coming to some of those vote meetings, please do.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 17, consider resolution authorizing the purchase of the 2023 Elgin Pelican NP Street Sweeper. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Robert?
We're asking the council to approve the purchase of the street sweeper, the one that we currently have, the 2012, is ending, nearing the end of its life cycle. And we're asking to purchase this new one. It will not be purchased until the next fiscal year, but we need to order it now because of the lead time getting the new one.
And?
Yeah, we won't receive it until late fall. No.
No, it's in, it's in the upcoming fiscal year that it's.
Yeah, it's in the upcoming, we're just asking for it early because of the, the delay in, in getting it.
And, and my, my, um, presentation here has a, um, wrong number. The budget amount is 225,000, not 250,000, and the purchase price with trade-in is 217,066. So we're within budget.
Yes.
Or are we spending that money at this period?
No, no, it will not.
Or it'll stay within the correct fiscal budget?
We'll stay, it'll, it'll stay just like it is. We're just asking for it early because of the.
It's gonna take a while to get it here.
Right, they're not, they're not making us pay upfront.
No, no.
Are we locking the price in?
Yes, yes. Once we tell them that we want it, then that's where the price will stay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 18, boards and commissions.
Uh, so we have a, um, final notification for the Veterans Memorial Commission, Kathy Goldie with term to expire 6/1/2027. Uh, we have a second notification for civil service. We have a first notification for architectural design review, and we have a mayoral appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, which requires a vote, which is James West, with time, term to expire 9/1/2023. Uh, again, you can do an omnibus, uh, motion to, for the two that need votes tonight.
I have, I have a question, because Ed says it expires 21. Is that correct?
Oh, sorry, that is, um, uh, it's gonna be 20, 2024.
Okay.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just have to watch my cut and paste better.
All those opposed? Item number 19, council liaisons on reports.
Any council member have a report?
Item number 20, staff reports.
Staff members, anybody?
I do. The runway lighting project out at the airport's about 30% complete. It's been delayed because of the weather, the rain, wet weather's kind of held that up. Um, we will be replacing in the next week or two. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the airport, but Hangar 1 is the big hangar that used to be the maintenance hangar, and it still is, but that's where, uh, the airplanes used to get worked on in there by Lender Aviation. Uh, that door is a multi-part door that is way overdue to be replaced, and so we've figured that into the current budget that we had without asking for any additional money, and that door's going to be taken out and a new one put in. At the sewer department, they've been, uh, helping out at the wastewater treatment plant, working with Tom's guys, removing the sludge out of one of the clarifiers, doing that in-house instead of having to contract that out, which has been a great asset with both departments, they're working together. The rainbow lift station, the contractor has started clearing the brush and, and, and kind of prepping the area to, um, start on the construction of the lift station, but due to, uh, material delays, that's kind of been on hold, but we're anticipating that that'll start up here in the next couple of weeks, and they'll start digging and, and getting the, uh, wet well set. Street Department has been busy putting, uh, taking trees down in the right-of-way and in some of the city properties, so that's kind of been their last several weeks projects. Uh, I've had a couple people call and ask, when are the boat docks gonna go in? If you drive down with the river right now, you can see that the, the cable is just about underwater right now. Ideally, we'd like for the water to be around seven foot or lower. So the question gets asked a lot, when are you going to put it in? It all depends on what the river looks like. We look at the long-term forecast a couple of weeks out. We don't want to put the dock in and then it get tore up or have to take it back out or constantly have to be clearing debris away from it. In the Parks and Bridge Department, they've been working on the swimming pool the last few days along with some, uh, staff from here at City Hall, getting the pool ready to open up. Plan to have it open by Memorial Weekend, so they've been hardworking on that. They've also, the mowing season has started with the wet weather and the warm weather. They've been, been doing quite a bit of mowing. Um, had a couple of questions too. This came the last couple of years. When are the restrooms going to be opened at the parks? We've set, May 1st is when we're going to have the porta-potties delivered, so the restrooms are open in the parks. The porta-potties are there. The reason that May 1st is kind of the date that we've set to do that, uh, if we turn the water onto the restrooms and we have a cold day that gets down to 27, 26 degrees, we could potentially, pipes freeze. So the restrooms are open, porta-potties are at all the parks where they're going to be. Um, sanitation, putting the two, uh, workers in one truck and using the trailer, so far still working well. Haven't had any issues with that, so that's going pretty good. Cemetery is getting ready for, uh, Memorial Day. Uh, the week of May 23rd to the 27th, we will pull staff from all departments and everybody will chip in and help get the cemetery ready. We still do not have, uh, the prison workers back, and Cole actually sent an email today trying to help the situation, see if we can get that back. As of right now, there is no tentative plan to get them back at any time soon, so, um, but all departments will chip in and help, help get that ready and, and get that looking the best that we can. Uh, Tombstone Tune-Up, we had to cancel it last Saturday due to the wet weather. We didn't want to do more damage to the cemetery than what we'd be doing good. So Tombstone Tune-Up will be May 14th from 8 to noon. If anybody wants to come out and give us a hand. That's all I got.
Want to come up here if I can't see you, but the downwind, if you don't want. Now that we have nice speakers over there, right?
So I just wanted to give a quick update about, uh, the UTV ordinance, how it's been going. So, uh, Mayor Mahoney called me, I think about the day before you guys all voted to pass it, and we are now issuing the permits for the city. And it's been going fairly smooth so far. We've handed out about 40 applications, and as of today, we've issued 22 permits. Uh, the inspection started Monday. Everybody's been really good to work with. Uh, there are a couple of things that we may come back and ask the council for at the end of this. There was a slight glitch in the way that the code was written from Lynch, Dallas, uh, so the clerk of courts would not accept a violation based on the way the, the ordinance was written on an echo form. For an echo form for us is basically like a uniform traffic citation. So we had to create a new form, working with our city attorney to electronically submit a, a violation of the city ordinance, and then the city attorney will basically issue a summons to the person, uh, that had a violation to set the court date. Uh, so we are going to see maybe if, once this all gets going, if we need to, if we can come back to the council and maybe ask that Lynch, Dallas, uh, revise the ordinance so we can use it on a standardized form that's already, uh, electronically available to everybody just to make the process a little bit easier. Uh, there was also a glitch with, none of this stuff has to do with the city, but as, these are things that we encountered along the way. So there was a glitch with, uh, the DNR registration, and, uh, part of the reason I was late tonight is trying to resolve that issue. It just came to light today. So while we have nothing to do with the DNR registration, their forms have some inaccurate, uh, facts and numbers on it. So I was talking to, uh, DNR to try to resolve that so the people of our community that want these permits can get them taken care of. So luckily, I know one of the conservation officers, he's volunteered to, uh, take care of that for us, so we just got that resolved tonight. I think we've only had two applicants that ran into an issue with that, and, uh, so we're kind of doing that for them also for the Recorder's Office and for DNR. Uh, we just want to get everybody started, get the process going, and then see how it, it ends up. Um, so I think that is everything that we've run into so far. It's nothing major. It's all things that we've taken care of, and we'll see how it goes from there. Anybody have any questions other than that?
Are, are the tickets, they're not allowed to be ran through tracks?
Correct.
The traffic ones as well?
If we rewrite the ordinance to include a set dollar amount for the fine, then we could use the municipal infraction on an echo form through tracks. We already had it entered into tracks. Uh, we already called DOT, had it all ready to go, and, uh, when the clerk's office found out that there was not a set penalty, uh, they said, they sent us the clerk of court rules from the state of Iowa that said that, uh, it would not be permissible to do it that way.
Oh. I'll call you. Wonder if we could run it civilly like a truancy?
It will be very, yeah.
It's a large window. It's like 100 to a thousand dollar fine there. It's not a set one.
Yeah. I think it's 200 to 750 based on the way the, uh, ordinance was drafted from Lynch, Dallas, under municipal code, so. And, and we may not have to concern ourselves with it. We can get this up and running. We can see how it's working out, but I just want you to be aware that we may come back and ask you to switch it to that. Use your form. Why is it different, um, for any other, um, motor vehicle law? Why is it different from, uh, the fines or the violations different from a car? Sure. So the, the only reason that the form is different, the violation itself is no different because of the way it, the, the council and the city passed it. It's still under the, the traffic code, but it has to do with the way the form would be completed, meaning, meaning that because there is not an exact dollar amount for the fine, that there is a range that we couldn't use the echo form and tracks, which is all electronic, controlled by the state and the Department of Transportation. Thank you all.
Go ahead, Pam.
Um, the only thing I actually had was, um, I did issue permit for electron, or an electric substation on the bypass, so if you see something going up there, that's what that is. Um, 518 Maine, um, has approval for, to start their, uh, paid parking, um, that they're going to do, that the council, that was part of the, um, development plan for that property. That should be starting, uh, I don't know, Wendell, he, he wants permission to, to do it, but he said he wasn't going to be able to get some of his equipment and materials for a few, uh, up to a couple of months, so, but that will get started. Um, we received, and this has been a little while back, a precinct plan, um, imposed. So the ordinance for the wards will be coming back to the city council. I'm not 100% sure what the, the, that was all about, but we did have to work on, um, changes to the corporate limits, which, when Liberty was annexed and the, um, city property, um, where the gun range is, those weren't included in the corporate limits. There's no houses, of course, on those, so it doesn't really affect, um, voting, but, uh, so John, Jason, and myself, um, worked on, uh, getting the corporate limits up to date, which was part of the wards. So I'm, I'm, we're thinking we're ready, uh, we're just waiting for the state to approve and, um, get it back to us, and then the county's waiting on us. So we're, we're kind of just waiting on the state. It's always a hurry up and wait, but.
And, and what happened was, is, is once we submitted our plan, it didn't line up with what the county needed to do for their precincts, and so the state imposed a precinct plan upon us, but it was unclear what they did, and it took us weeks, weeks to get someone to respond to our questions. So hopefully they'll pay attention to it and we'll get it back here soon. Go ahead, Tom.
Um, just want to let everybody know, uh, the pretreatment surveys we emailed out are slowly trickling in. I've spoken with, uh, some business owners with some of their concerns, and, uh, after I spoke with them, um, they felt pretty good about it. So I just want to let y'all know about that. If anybody calls you up and asks you about them, whether they're on the up and up, you know, what the city is doing, just tell them, you know, it's a requirement for the DNR and the EPA.
Uh, so along that lines, um, an update with ADM. The attorney for ADM has submitted a proposed consent order, asked for a time to negotiate, uh, points of it. Uh, staff is reviewing the, the draft to prepare a response instead of meeting for discussion, and in fact, that meeting is next Tuesday. Um, Tom did report that there was a precipit, precipitant, uh, was forming on the plant's digesters, and when te, when tested, does not break down. This is, i- indicated in inorganic matter. Staff requested that ADM investigate as to possible source and provide a preliminary report on substance source and remedies. The preliminary report is due within two weeks of our request, which would be next week, and a final report would be due, uh, in three weeks, which would be the week after. Uh, solar project staff, staff met with representative from Precision Energy on setting up, uh, solar PPAs for city facilities. Staff is continuing, uh, contacting other communities, currently, uh, considering similar proposals for information on how they are evaluating the proposals. Once we have that information, staff will determine how to proceed. Um, and, uh, I've had another, uh, firm contact me, so we will probably send out, um, um, RFPs and then, um, uh, evaluate those. And the city of Burlington just recently went through this, and so they've sent me their evaluation form, so we, um, can, um, plagiarize, I mean, borrow a lot of this and get something done. Uh, goal-making session. I contacted Mark Jackson of Story City to facilitate our goal-making session. Mr. Jackson was part of the search team for my position and does goal sessions as well. I have used Mr. Jackson at, Jackson at previous communities with good results. His availability is the week of May 9th, any day, and the 23rd or 25th of May. Council needs to give staff a preference so we can set a date, so please look at your calendars right now. Uh, Mr. Jackson uses the standard procedure of meeting with department heads during the day and then meeting with the council and staff in the evening. Usually the meeting is held outside of city, outside of City Hall to promote, promote a more relaxed atmosphere. The meeting, however, is still open to the public, so once I'm done with my report, I'm going to ask you what date you prefer. South 18th Street Grant. Mayor Mahoney and I had a telephone conference with Congressman Miller Meeks on April 26th. The purpose of the meeting was to provide additional insight into the project for the community project funding grant. The Congresswoman can only submit 10 to 15 projects to the Appropriations Committee for possible funding. Staff was notified on April 28th that the project was submitted to the committee for consideration. Uh, we were cautioned, uh, that the committee would need to approve the project, as would the House and Senate as a whole, without amendment, and have the bill signed into law. Um, it is good news that the bill advanced past the first round and was actually submitted to the committee, so at least we're getting some consideration on that. Hopefully the committee finds it worthy enough to, um, fund it. Um, so, um, please, what is your preference? Next week sometime or the 23rd or 23rd or 25th of May?
I know for me, it's a little hard to turn around next week, but, and I can do the 23rd or the 25th later in May. I can make it happen a lot easier.
Yeah, I'd like to do the 25th if we can.
20, 25th is my best date as well.
Me too.
Okay. I will let, um, I will let Mark know, um, and we'll set it for the 25th. Um, I'll ask him what time and then I'll let you know, uh, as to, um, when and where. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Do we have any new business? No new business, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wendy, Wendy.
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 Wendy.